This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. I'll call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. If you would all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on with our announcements, I'm going to turn the meeting over for a moment to our Police Chief Dorni.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. If everybody would please join me in a moment of silence for the victims, the students and teachers we lost recently in Uvalde, Texas. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. I want to ask our interim township manager, Randy Cope, if you would please review our public virtual meeting rules.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of tonight's agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, simply raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually this evening, please keep your microphones or telephones on mute to avoid any background interference. The chat box feature will be active throughout tonight's meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring GoToMeeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will then have the opportunity to comment or ask your question.
Thank you, Randy. I'd like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session for legal and personal matters on May 25th and also before tonight's meeting. Moving on to our next agenda item, we have a recognition this evening. We have Al Tope and Bill McNair, who have retired from our Planning Commission, and I'm going to turn it over to our interim township manager, Randy Cope. We have some recognition for both of these gentlemen.
Sure. Welcome, gentlemen, and thank you. Tonight, we recognize two very dedicated residents of South Whitehall Township with a combined experience of 66 years, serving on multiple different boards. Tonight, I have two distinguished service award to present. First one for William H. McNair Jr. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, Township Staff, and citizens of South Whitehall would like to recognize your 24 years of service from 1988 to 2000, I'm sorry, 1998 to 2022 to South Whitehall Township on the Planning Commission, Zoning Hearing Board, and the Environmental and Pollution Advisory Board. You have shown such outstanding commitment to our township and have been an example and inspiration for us all. Therefore, it is with great pride and appreciation that the Board of Commissioners and Township Staff hereby present this token of our gratitude to you, Bill McNair. And next, we would like to recognize Alan L. Tope with another distinguished service award. The South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners, Township Staff, and citizens of South Whitehall Township would like to recognize your 42 years of stellar service to South Whitehall Township. You served on the Public Safety Commission from 1980 to 1982, followed by service on the Planning Commission from 1982 to 2022, showing outstanding commitment to our township. You have truly been an example and inspiration to us all. Therefore, it is with great pride and appreciation that the Board of Commissioners and Township Staff hereby present this distinguished service award to Alan Tope. If we could just take a brief moment and have the board come down for a quick picture,
Thank you for your patience. Moving on, we are agenda item number four, courtesy of the floors, or anyone in the public who would like to address the board at this time. Come on up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself with your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Poehl, 1415 Frederick Street, Allentown, PA, 18104. I have a communication from the Chief of Police, RE, Right-to-No Request, Act 22, PD 2022-60. Dear Mr. Poehl, on May 20th, 2022, South Whitehall Township pursues your request for dash cam and/or video from a body camera of the officer. At this time, your request is denied. The document relating to your request is or exempt from disclosure pursuant to Act 22, 42 PA, CSA 67 A04 subsection A. When the request is denied, the demander may appeal within 30 days of the date of denial to the Court of Common Belief with jurisdiction over the matter. 42 PA, CS 67 A04 subsection A, determination. Acceptance provided in this section if a law enforcement agency determines that an audio recording or video recording contains potential evidence in a criminal matter, information pertaining to an investigation, or a matter in which a criminal charge has been filed, confidential information or victim information, and a reasonable redaction of the audio and video recording will not safeguard potential evidence. Information pertaining to an investigation, confidential information or victim information, the law enforcement agency shall deny the request in writing. The written denial shall state that reasonable redaction of the audio recording or video recording will not safeguard potential evidence, information pertaining to an investigation, confidential information, or victim information. From Glenn A. Dorni, Chief of Police, Open Records Officer, also the head of the Police Complaints Board, as I understand it, is there any chance that these multifaceted positions could present conflicts of interest? And I want to know how is your request is denied fulfilling the statute? So are we going to court? Going to court comments plea? I'm asking. Somebody, anybody?
I guess I'm not sure what you're asking if we're going to court for. Are you appealing the request?
The non-statement of the reason. "I don't want to" is not a reason. It lists the reasons that you may deny the request, proceeding the report. This does not list any reason other than "we don't want to." So...
Solicitors, either, I do believe there is an appeal process for a right-to-no request.
There is, and this particular matter raised by Mr. Poehl is not something I've looked at, so I'm not familiar with the particular request or with the response.
Yes.
There certainly is the appeal process that's outlined in the statute, and I would also add that if Mr. Poehl believes that the response was inadequate, perhaps informally, he could be asking whether there could be a different, more supplemental reason beyond what has been stated in that letter, and I can't say without looking into whether that's the case.
And I'm willing to wait. I'm willing to work with anybody. All I'm saying is, is what is in this recording that is so detrimental that nobody wants me to see it? What's going on?
Just recognize, Mr. Poehl, by stating what I stated, I'm not suggesting that there necessarily will be any supplemental response coming from Chief Dorni. I'm just suggesting that since you've raised the question, it's something that could be discussed subsequent to this meeting, and someone could give you an answer as to whether that's going to be forthcoming or not.
And with that being one, I expect to hear that.
I'm not in a position to...
Sir, if I could have your information after the meeting?
Sure.
I'd be happy to follow up with you.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the board this evening? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes from our May 18th, 2022 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the board on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, I would need a motion to approve.
Move.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on down, we have no presentations or ordinances this evening. We do have a couple of resolutions. Our first resolution is a resolution amending Resolution 2021-48, granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Building Addition 4815 Crackersport Road to grant additional waivers pursuant to Sado sections 312 dot 13 F3 and 312 dash 43. And our Director of Community Development, Dave Menhart, is presenting this item this evening.
Yes, as usual, I will give a brief introduction and then hand it over to the applicant. So this is a project located at 4815 Crackersport Road. It proposes a 13,500-square-foot building addition to the existing building on the property. The plan was approved at the Board of Commissioners' meeting on October 20th, 2021. They had, I believe it was, seven conditions, and they're down to two remaining, and they're asking for the waivers that revolve around issuance of building permits prior to plan recording, and they can kind of present some of the issues they're having with, I believe it's PPL. So with that, I can hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Chris McLean from Fitzpatrick-Linson-Bubba on behalf of the applicant, Triple Net Investments 64. And the summary was right on. We have been checking off the conditions of the approval. At this point, we are working with the Solicitor's Office to wrap up the agreements and get security in place, insurance, that sort of thing. And late this afternoon, we heard from Mr. Talarida that he was satisfied with the plan, but yet we have one comment, or rather, one outstanding issue to satisfy Mr. Talarida, and that relates to PPL and the sidewalk. The sidewalk is proposed to be constructed along Crackersport Road. We have submitted to PPL the request to get a work order into their system so they can look at it. We do have that work order. We have started to explain to PPL what we need from them versus some sort of utility installation or pole relocation. It's just, hey, look at where the sidewalk is and tell us it's good, and we're just not sure is that going to take a week or a month or longer. And while we're in the summer, we would like to take advantage of the weather and start construction. We certainly have been working to satisfy the conditions, and we would respect the request of the board's consideration of the waiver to allow us to pull the building permit and at least get started on the work. The sidewalk, whether or not PPL has comments, is not going to impact the balance of the work on site to the building and kind of reconfiguring the impervious surface internally. So if there is something that comes up that we don't expect, but that PPL throws at us, we'll be able to adjust that, get the plans back into the township, and get them squared away before we have them recorded.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a comment. I think the request is reasonable, and I think the board should approve it.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Kelly, I would just like to, first of all, thank you very much for Attorney McLean for coming before us and presenting something that is actually an asset to the community, in my view. I just want to make sure that I ask this question. So I'm not sure what the issues are with PPL. If it's just a work schedule thing, then, you know, that happens. But I would like to have you confirm that if there are problematic issues with PPL that involve some kind of physical need to change the plan, that you are committed to doing that? And that if we grant this, your request this evening, it won't result in, down the line, we have an issue and you're going to come back and ask for the waiver of the sidewalk now?
That is certainly not the intention. The intention is to build the sidewalk. We heard the Planning Commission and the board loud and clear with the approval. We understand that calling the balance of the deferrals is on the agenda later, so we're not looking for this as some sort of bait and switch. If PPL says, hey, we need you to tweak something because there's a pole or a guy wire that they just can't deal with, we'll change the location of the sidewalk and bring that back to get it approved.
Thank you.
I just had one question. Where are you in the process? How long has PPL had this request from you, and do you have an anticipated date where you would expect to hear at least preliminary information from them?
I cannot answer the questions to when PPL got the work order from us. Mr. Dominic Baker from the applicant is here, not to put you on the spot. It hasn't been a huge period of time, but it's... I'm not in a position to make a representation as to when it will be resolved. I'm certainly hopeful it might be within the month, but we're just not certain, and that's part of the reason we're here asking for this. If we get it resolved tomorrow, it's going to be a non-issue. We'll get the plan recorded, and it'll be fine, but it's the what-if that we're trying to account for.
Thank you. And I had a question for the solicitor, or maybe it's for Tony. Is there a way to build into this request to put a sunset date so that it's not just hanging out there indefinitely? Is there a way to have a, you know, within 60 days or 90 days to make sure that this sidewalk is completed?
Certainly. I was going to mention, as part of this, the applicant's obtaining a building permit, but in order for us to proceed and have them proceed, they won't be able to get a certificate of occupancy until this is all squared away, which then allows them to record the plan and the developer's agreement and all of that. So while I think it'll be too difficult at this point, not knowing how PPL and their utilities, so it can take them quite some time, it's hard to pinpoint, and I probably wouldn't recommend that we put a date certain. I think linking it to ultimately, and we'll put these provisions in the developer's agreement, linking it to the certificate of occupancy, and also ensuring that we have adequate security this way built in, so in the event something gets even further delay with PPL, which we wouldn't hopefully expect that to happen, there's always that security there that protects us, the township, to know that at some point in time, the sidewalk will go in, and they'll just have to maintain that security in place until it is done. But as long as it's not impacting the development and the building on the site, there really is not much risk for the township at this point in time. We have the developer's agreements, we have the security, and they will be responsible for that. And again, if they would not do it, for whatever reason, we'd have the security to take that task on ourselves. So I believe, from a legal perspective, that the township is protected, regardless of setting forth a date certain for which it's completed.
No, I was actually going to mention the securities also would be collected for the sidewalk also, so the township would have the money, and it would be something that can be put in. They're just in a tough spot since this was deferred, the PPL utilities were placed. All they're looking to do is make sure that the guy wire would not be in an area that would cause injury or problems with the sidewalk going underneath it. So it's something that's necessary to be done, but it's something that I believe, also like Lisa said, the township is very protected.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Commissioner Hodges?
Question. This was the former Covenant Transport building, and you're adding on to it, is that correct?
Correct.
What type of business is it going to be now? Is it distribution? Is it warehousing? Is it flex? Is it, you know, what is it?
I'm sorry. If you're going to, can you speak into the microphone so people online can hear? Thank you.
Dominic Baker with JG Petri, Triple Net 64. The tenant is US Express. It's a very similar company to Covenant Transport. The building that they're in today, they're in the current 10,000-square-foot building, it's kind of showers, amenity space, offices for the truckers to come park their trucks, take a shower. This will expand that and also allow for some truck repair to happen onsite versus trucks coming onto the site, leaving the site to get repaired, coming back to the site, and the trucker can come and go. So it's a similar operation. I believe by zoning, it's called a trucking terminal. If that's, if I remember correctly, I think it's trucking terminal, but similar business to Covenant Transport.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
Move.
Second.
Motion in a second on the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, designating land located at Spring House Road donated to the township by David T. Davis and Joanne S. Davis, and naming it Davis-Smith Open Space. I will call on our interim township manager, Randy Cope, to present this memo.
Sure. This came up at a recent meeting, I believe it was the first meeting in May, and we've been working between our solicitor as well as the Davis family solicitor as well to come up with this resolution. It's been mutually agreed upon. This is for the 26.87 acres recently dedicated to the township from Mr. and Mrs. Davis earlier this, I'm sorry, in November of 2021. There's been an interest to associate naming rights with this property, which was presented to the board at a previous meeting. So this is the resolution in front of us here for potential consideration and action by the board this evening.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any questions from the board on this item? I did have one question. It was a question I raised at our last meeting when this matter was before us. The naming rights are listed as Davis-Smith Open Space, and I know that we had used the word preserved in our conversation. Has there been any consideration to include preserved onto this property?
Sure, and I don't think that would be a problem for the donor, and that's something we can certainly approach them with. So if the board, if that was the pleasure of the board this evening, we can certainly act on this resolution with the contingency to make sure the donor is okay with the slight change in names.
I'll open up to the rest of the board for questions.
I'd support that request if, you know, if the family who donated the land to South Whitehall is agreeable to it, yes.
No, I agree with that, right.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, looks like all are in agreement, so do I need to change the verbiage of what we're approving tonight to...
Solicitors, either, they may just be able to act on it as amended?
I believe that's correct, Mr. Cope, and my understanding of the discussion that the board just had, and certainly correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding, is that there should be a request made of the donor to include the word preserve, as you've suggested, that if for some reason unknown to us this evening, they just really don't want that to have happened, you're still okay with the resolution as it stands now, unamended. Would that be correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. I think with that basis, you can proceed.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved. Second.
Very good. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Moving on to motion. We have a motion to proceed with Crackersport Road sidewalk deferral call-ins, and I will again call on our Community Development Department Director, David Menhart, to present.
So let me just get it open for the folks online here real quick. So what we have before us is related to the 4815 Crackersport that we just heard. At the Planning Commission meeting, they recommended calling in adjacent deferrals. One of the things we've been working on related to this is what's the process? What kind of procedure are we going to follow as we go through the procedure to call in these sidewalk deferrals? So we prepared a brief policy and procedures document that is on Board Docs. I emailed it Friday to the board, and just kind of spells out what a deferral is, how many there are. Randy, it's on the other, that's in the other document. And I think the important part is to talk about the process. The initial starting point for the process is that initial request or recommendation. So in this case, it was the Planning Commission made the recommendation to call in the sidewalk, so that's what we're bringing forward to you. That recommendation, we had another situation where we called in deferrals along in the area of the Tillman Square Shopping Center. That deferral request originated with Lanta because they were looking to change the bus stop locations. So what we wanted to do is identify who's making that initial request and bring that to the board. The next step is to prepare the background, so we go through the approving resolutions, identify the deferrals, present the map of where the deferrals are, and then we come to the BOC. And here we are with the Crackersport Road one. And then the next steps, and so we come to the BOC and ask for a motion to proceed with drafting a resolution to undo the deferral resolution. And then we prepare notification, we send out the notification to the applicants or property owners stating that we're calling in those deferrals. Right now, we have built into, you know, it's, right now, it's kind of an informal policy. Two letters, if we don't hear answer after the second letter, we come back to the BOC. There are some provisions in the First Class Township Code that allow the BOC to initiate sidewalk construction, which is a whole nother can of worms. So I didn't really want to bring that up at this point, but just know that that option is available, and that involves an ordinance for that specific section, and it's all in the First Class Township Code. Hopefully, we never have to get to that point, and we begin working with the owners to get the sidewalks installed. So I guess any questions on that part of it? And then I That deferral request originated with Lanta because they were looking to change the bus stop locations. So what we wanted to do is identify who's making that initial request and bring that to the board. The next step is to prepare the background. So we go through the approving resolutions, identify the deferrals, present the map of where the deferrals are, and then we come to the BOC. And here we are with the Cracker Sport Road one. And then the next steps, and so we come to the BOC and ask for a motion to proceed with drafting a resolution to undo the deferral resolution. And then we prepare notification, we send out the notification to the applicants or property owners stating that we're calling in those deferrals. Right now, we have built into, you know, it's, right now, it's kind of an informal Two letters, if we don't hear answer after the second letter, we come back to the BOC. There are some provisions in the First Class Township Code that allow the BOC to initiate sidewalk construction, which is a whole nother can of worms. So I didn't really want to bring that up at this point, but just know that that option is available, and that involves an ordinance for that specific section, and it's all in the First Class Township Code. Hopefully, we never have to get to that point, and we begin working with the owners to get the sidewalks installed. So I guess any questions on that part of it, and then I can get into the details of the Cracker Sport Road.
I, I'm, oh, go ahead. Good. I'm, here's my personal thought. I kind of hinted at this, if I didn't say it outright, when this topic was brought before the board previously. In my preference, strong preference would be, and of course, it would be a board decision, but my strong preference would be that part of this procedure is that the landowner, whoever that might be, in this case, businesses, is notified that the board may be taking action on their property and have the, at least the opportunity to present, to come to the meeting and discuss whatever they may want to discuss with the board before we take action. That's just my personal preference. I wouldn't want to be someone on the receiving end of this letter and saying, thinking to myself, I wish I had an opportunity to say something.
We discussed that as staff, and one of the thoughts was to, after the motion, and then we draft the resolutions, we notify the property owners that the resolutions will be coming to the BOC, and then they can show up at that time and be made aware of it and discuss.
Davis, is that, I did read the procedure, is that in the procedure written?
It's not in as written, but we can certainly add it to the resolution clause when we come back for the approving resolution.
My question, Davis, none of this is going to be a surprise to the business owner. They all knew it ultimately would be coming. It was a deferral, and it was just a question of timing. So once those individual owners receive the letter, they say, okay, South Whitehouse calling them in.
Yes. The issue becomes, the issue becomes if ownership changes and it's not disclosed, then, you know, we have to explain everything.
We actually know if that's happened, I'm just curious.
Don't know.
Okay, I'm just.
But I'm pretty sure it's the same, but we'll look into that.
I would venture to say with 22 miles of potential deferral call-ins of sidewalk, there are going to be some owners that have changed.
Yeah.
And I think age comes into play too. With the more recent approach the township has used last number of years, things were probably documented and locatable much more easily than something from 30 years ago.
Yeah, the records that we were able to comb through, so we have a sidewalk deferral map, so we will often look at it as projects are coming in to see what's adjacent to the projects that are coming in. And during that process, we were able to use Laserfish, which is our cataloging software, and that was going back to, we found records back to 93. So that's kind of where we're starting for identifying deferrals.
Dave, I just had a question. Once a professional service agreement is in place with the property owner to install the sidewalks, what period of time does the owner have to actually complete that project?
So it's kind of hard to put timelines on things because of construction seasons. So we were mulling that one around as well. We kind of feel like a year will at least get one construction season in it. You know, and I could see, we were talking about it in, you know, if these letters went out and got to the property owners, it would be probably close to a year before they could even mobilize, because a lot of, sometimes the design changes and, like with this case, PPL may have located a pole in the middle of the sidewalk where the sidewalk was supposed to go, so they may have to make design changes, and that takes time to work through. So I would think a minimum of a year. I don't know, Tony, if you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I would almost lean towards two, and the only reason is because the property owner gets this notification. They would have to hire an engineer to design it because even though these deferrals were there, and there might have been five, 10 years ago, ADA requirements changed, things changed, they have to look in, like they've said, there's other utilities. So until they hire an engineer, design a plan, have it reviewed and approved by the engineer's office, then get the money for construction, that might be a couple month process, just in the reviews and approvals. So again, if you hit it in a July timeframe, you miss the build season, mobilize the next year. So it might, from start to finish, you might be 18 months to two years until you actually have a final inspection and then maintenance, so.
I would also add that while it will not come up often on particularly large properties, it's possible that the sidewalk requirement is going to trigger a deed for an NPDS permit across the threshold, and that's a nine-month to 12-month process alone without the design and construction aspect of it.
What assurance do we have that it will be done?
That, I think the assurance ultimately will be, and this is what I don't personally like, but ultimately, the township does have the authority to just enforce it.
So, yes, that's the First Class Township Code has a provision in it where the township can actually construct the sidewalks and then bill the property owner. So that's.
I think each, before going to the First Class Township Code route, I think if we do have a recalcitrant property owner, that's when it's going to take looking at the specific documentation for that particular project. What does it say in the developer's agreement? What documents have been signed? And look at the resolution. Is there any security still outstanding? Lot of questions that are going to be unique to each situation.
Any other questions from the board?
I guess I do have a question. The topic before us is a motion to proceed with the deferral, sidewalk deferral call-ins. What's not before the board in terms of action is the process that we talked about. Am I right on that?
Yes, it's.
So without, without, for instance, I've expressed my strong preference, but that would not be applied to the motion in front of us unless we revise the process.
Correct, and I think.
And so let me just go forward a little bit more. For that reason, I would vote against this motion, whereas if we had a process that included my thought about the courtesy of informing the landowner that this is on the agenda before they get this letter, I may feel very differently about this motion.
And I think we can, one of the things with the previous call-in, there was no process. So it was very ambiguous and difficult to work through. So the first step is to get it down on paper and hear comments. If it's the pleasure of the board, I think we can certainly build in, like modify the process and say the notification will happen at the time of the resolution so that the applicant or the property owner has an opportunity to appear at the time of the resolution.
I guess instead of voting against the motion, perhaps I could ask the board if we'd be willing to table it or defer this motion to the next meeting, if there's any interest at all in revising the process. And if there isn't any interest, then may as well just vote on it.
Well, as a follow-up to that, Commissioner Osborne, this process, do we need to memorialize it or have it be an official document of the board so that it is enforceable?
I'll defer to Joe on that one.
The way I see it, it can be handled one of two ways. Either on an ad hoc basis, when Dave or staff comes in front of you and asks for a particular deferral to be authorized, and then you talk about it like you are this evening. Or there could be a process put in place and everybody knows what it is, and that's the process that will be used unless in a particular instance, for a particular reason, there's a modification of the process decided by board based on recommendation of staff. So to Commissioner Osborne's point, I mean, I'm not aware from staff, Dave or otherwise, whether there's any urgency to this request this evening or not, but certainly if there is, talk about it. If there isn't, then maybe dealing with the policy first and the action later is an option.
The timing was just the fact that the applicant for 4815 was here, and that's what prompted this call-in. So because we had that applicant here, it was a good opportunity to bring this forward to the board while everything was fresh and everybody.
And I would note, and I think staff knows better than I do, but when you have multiple property owners joining together to talk to the same contractor, you can usually get better pricing.
So this creates a question. What is this process? I mean, it's a document. What is its official standing within the township? What category? I gather it's not an ordinance. It's just.
So it's a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit more than the ad hoc coming and presenting stuff. It's, you know, a document that when we come to the board with these deferrals, the board's aware of that we're going to be following this process. And it certainly can be memorialized, and we can come back to you with something that memorializes it and makes it a formal process and procedure, if that's the board's pleasure, or we can keep it kind of an ad hoc discussions. Handle it that.
I think with 22 miles deferred, that it would make sense to have a policy in place that's equitable. And if there needs to be a modification based on special circumstances, that's something the board could consider, but that would be my thought.
We saw that tonight earlier, the one where Joe stepped down. You know, it was an exception, but I think everybody in the township would know what the process is, not just take a piecemeal basis. So I think what I would concur with Brad to pull this and come with a process that we can vote on as a board, and then it's down black and white so that landowners can see it firsthand, and this is what we're going to do.
Black and white is helpful.
Yeah, that's what I would prefer.
I agree with that, but just to go one step further. So if we do that, like every process, right, has an owner and has a place it resides and where it's, you know, the latest revision is known and the owner makes revisions in accordance with board direction. So where does this reside?
I don't know the answer to that right now. We'll have to figure out where it will reside, whether it's appropriate for it to be as part of an ordinance or some other process or place. We'll come back with that and have it nailed down for you.
All right. So I guess one more thought for you, David. It's outstanding, you know, with the addition of Commissioner Osborne's comment. I mean, it's well-written, it's understandable. So whether you did it or whoever did it, thank you very much for that.
We have a great staff in the CD department.
Right.
Commissioner Kelly, I like, I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
I have a different type of question, if you still have one on this process.
I do, so let me, I'll just say it very quickly. I like your idea, and I think one of the reasons that I like it is this, as Commissioner Kennedy said, it communicates to the landowner, this is our process. But what it also does is keep our existing board away from a decision on, let's say, the next case where we make a different decision and cause a problem. And what it also does is if it stands the test of time, then it keeps subsequent boards, it gives them, this is what we've been doing, and this is why. So I like the codification of it.
I would agree.
So my different type of question is to the two planning commission members present, why are you recommending that this be called in at this time?
Brian, you're the vice director of the planning commission. I saw you taking notes.
When I come to a meeting and I get called, which is fine. I'm a resident, Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. I think if anything, I live just west of this location, and I have some comments to make when it's public comment period. There's a lot of pedestrians using this road right now, from 309 to the warehouses that are all fully leased right now. Anytime you can get a pedestrian off the road is a safer situation, especially with large vehicles. The trucking company is expanding, they're getting more trucks in there. Also, the pandemic has shown that people want to get out and walk, and they want to do it safely. I see people walking on the sidewalks that are built at the warehouses all hours of the night, because rather than sitting in a break room with people you don't really want to work with, let alone take a break with, they're out walking all night long. And I think as a walkable community, we can be for runner of what a township should be. So I think we've deferred sidewalks way too long. It's great that we have a policy to, let's not waive them, not defer them, unless it's a really unique situation. So especially with Atlanta bus stop on 309, there are employees that walk down Hausman Road down Cracker Sport. The Atlanta bus doesn't come anywhere off of 309 currently. That may change in the future. Right now, it doesn't. So anytime you can get a pedestrian off the cartway of the road, it's a safer situation for everybody involved.
All right, thank you.
And I would just add one comment. I know oftentimes before the planning commission, we do get requests to waive sidewalks, and there's often an awful lot of discussion by the planners and the developers. And from the discussion that we've all had tonight, this process is not quick. It may catch a landowner off guard, and the planning commission certainly is not granting waivers. We are even, not even wanting to defer them unless we need to, and I think we see tonight why. If a developer's coming in with a plan, you have an opportunity there to go ahead and get that sidewalk in as long as it's not, as Brian made reference to, extenuating circumstances. Project gets done, we don't have to work as a township 10 or 15 years later to go back through the records and go through this tedious process and incur a cost for a developer that they're not expecting down the road. So thank you for the staff's work in guiding the planning commission in that direction, which I think is better for the township as a whole and provides, as Brian said, walkability, which is very important.
And to piggyback on Commissioner Kelly's comment, we always tell a developer, it's cheaper to put it in when you're building everything else. The concrete's onsite, do it now. And then when you do have ownership changes, and I believe all those properties have changed owners, just by historically living there almost my whole entire life. It's cheaper to do it at the land development phase almost 100% of the time than going back and then dealing with ownership changes, especially in residential developments. A landowner, a guy's buying a house, he doesn't read his whole entire deed, like, oh, this was deferred, and then, so commercial, this area is a good place to start and work out the kinks as you work through this process.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay.
Ow, I'm putting on my public hat. So as I said earlier, Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road, there's been ownership changes out there. If you could put up the map, okay, great. Intuitive, great. You're awesome. 635 Cracker Sport also has a little bit of frontage on Hausman Road. So and there's sidewalk being proposed for the warehouse that was approved just north of their property, so that would connect in. That's just a thought. And also, west of the turnpike, you have the Banco Beverage frontage at 5001 Cracker Sport. That's that red line off to the side there. And if you would call in that deferral, that would take sidewalk from the turnpike all the way to the township line, because the sidewalk's already built by the warehouses by my house. So that is just something to think about. And also, doing it collectively as this, you can't do it during the land development. Like was said earlier, there is economy of scale, getting everybody together, one contractor, and there's a cement company right there. And there's a cement company right there. So thank you.
And one of the, just to piggyback on the map is when we, in general terms, when we're looking at calling in deferrals, there's typically some sort of commonality or an opportunity for property owners to work together with one contractor and do a whole section at a time and/or they're filling in a big gap. So those are the things that we generate and look at. So we're looking at connectivity and building the network, you know, big chunks at a time. And we can kind of build that into the process document that we'll bring back to you.
Very good. Thank you for that explanation. Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? At this point, is it the pleasure of the board that we would table this motion to allow staff time to come back with a, a document for the process? Okay, can I have a motion to table?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to motion B, we have a motion authorizing interim township manager to execute the Lehigh County Authority Emergency Interconnect Agreement. And this will be presented tonight by our interim township manager, Randy Cope, and also our Public Works Manager, Herb Bender.
Sure, I will kick this one over to her, but we do have Phil Depau here from LCA representing Lehigh County Authority on their behalf as well. This is something staff's been working on diligently with the authority now for months. So Herb, if you wouldn't mind presenting this.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. The reason for this agreement is to help LCA with an emergency water connection. This is due to LCA losing a 2 million gallon reservoir in their northern area. In the agreement, it states that it will cause no disruption to the residents of South Whitehall. This interconnect will operate on a, a pressure valve. It will also open as long as our side has at least 40 PSI. As the DEP minimum PSI regulation is only 20. So our, the pressure reducing valve will close at 40 right away. That way our residents will not have any interruption if we are sending water into the LCA system. So if you have any questions for me or Mr. Phil, we'll be glad to answer anything.
Thank you, Herb. So this project will be funded by the LCA. There's no cost to the township.
No, they have opened up an escrow account and everything. They're taking care of everything.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
I have a quick question. You said it's not going to interrupt the water for our residents, right? It's not going to interfere with pressure or anything like that. I think you.
No, we had to turn all those pressures over. We had to do a pressure test on our system. LCA had to do one on their system also. We also had to do extensive water sampling to make sure that the water is compatible to mix together. DEP, LCA has worked with DEP on the permit. They have gotten a verbal that it is going to get pushed through. There is no, nothing really holding it up anymore to go.
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. We have a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item 10, correspondence and information items. I'll turn this portion over to our interim township manager, Randy Cope.
So we do have some existing vacancies on our boards and commissions. Civil Service Commission, we have one alternate vacancy. Green Advisory Council, we have one vacancy. Landscape Shade Tree Commission, we have two vacancies, one vacancy on our Parks and Recreation Board and three vacancies on our Environmental Advisory Council. We do have some upcoming meetings here. Friday, June 3rd will be our movie in the park at 8:15. June 6th, we'll have a Public Safety Commission meeting at 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, June 7th, we'll have our next comprehensive plan workshop at 7:00 PM. On Wednesday, June 8th, we'll have our next Civil Service Commission meeting at 1:00 PM. Thursday, June 9th will be the next Crime Watch meeting at 6:00 PM. We'll have a concert in the park at Cover Bridge Park on Friday, June 10th. And our Parks and Recreation Board will meet at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 13th.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board on these items? Any from the public? Moving on to old business, I'm going to call on Randy again to help with that. Where's Dan?
Sure, we did, are moving along with this process. We recently had our mandatory pre-bid meeting down at Where's Dam. Questions were, final questions were just submitted by the contractors through Penn Bid yesterday. On Monday, June 6th, we'll be doing our official bid opening. And then depending on how those bids come in, staff will be bringing a recommendation to the board for consideration on June 15th.
Do you have any sense of a timeline of when this project might be can work done and finished?
Ideally, we would be getting started probably mid-July with substantial completion of the project October 15th. Now with the ENS permit requirements and the growing season for the turf, that could extend into the next growing season or the spring until that project or until the turf is, I believe, 70% coverage area. So part of the bid spec did tie the contractor to our ENS permit and required them before they can actually get off the job that the substantial completion and the satisfactory of the Lehigh County Conservation District must be met for the turf conditions. But ideally, the majority of work will be done prior to the, you know, prior to the fall.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Moving on, we have our comprehensive plan update. Call again on our community development manager, David.
So yes, the comprehensive plan update meeting, we have a BOC Planning Commission Workshop, June 7th. We will be reviewing revised goals and strategies and implementation for community utilities. We have had a staff work session where we went through comments from the board, the boards and any comments received and prioritization and came up with a set of goals and strategies that we'll bring forward. Herb and Mike Elias were involved in that conversation. So those will be coming to that meeting. Then we will begin on housing and then community facilities. One thing that came up at the last meeting was at the planning commission meeting, they had the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. There were no items on the agenda. We are adding that to a workshop. So it'll be a joint workshop as well where we will, we don't think we'll get through community facilities. There's a lot in that. So that'll be kind of the overflow for that and we can plan accordingly if we can have time to move on to something else.
And Dave, that meeting is on Thursday, the 16th of?
Yes.
So instead of a regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, it's going to be another com-plan workshop with the board and the planning commission.
Yes, and that's been noticed, I believe, and we will update the website if it hasn't been done already.
Thank you. Any questions on the com-plan?
I got two. When will Michael, Michael Baker actually be on board?
They are on board.
They are?
Yes. So they were on board to help with meeting facilitation on a smaller contract. And then was it two meetings ago?
Yeah, I would say first meeting in May or last one in April.
Yeah.
Well, it was the meeting that the technology didn't work was the first time Hannah was with us.
Yes, and that was for the meeting facilitation, but the BOC meeting, we brought the agreement or the contract.
Right.
To the BOC.
Okay, so I'll be more specific. I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said that Michael Baker would begin assisting with the creation of the documents. So when will that occur? And actually with, with the highest degree of earnest, when will the first draft chapter of the com-plan be produced for people to be able to see and read it?
So Michael Baker, we have a meeting scheduled Friday to begin, you know, strategizing how we're going to roll this out and work on chapters and things like that. So that starts on Friday is our first real com-plan meeting to figure out, you know, tasks and, you know, a more detailed timeline. One of the things that came out of the workshop meeting was a more defined public engagement strategy. So that's one of the things that Michael Baker will be working on. I suspect that will be ready for the 16th meeting, at least a draft to kind of go over that part of it. But we'll have more information after Friday as far as how we're going to structure getting drafts out. One thing we've been doing on the website, there's sections, you know, as we get information completed, we upload it to the website. So that's kind of a rough draft, I would say. As things get completed, we'll be putting things in on that webpage.
Okay. And could we schedule a celebration when we reach that milestone?
I would love to schedule a celebration.
Thank you.
And Dave, the residents can go to the website. There's a, an opportunity to comment on.
Yes, so there's, on the website, we built, there's a draft com-plan page where we upload the new information. And then in each of the chapters, there's a link to a form, a comment form related to each of the goals and objectives. As part of the workshop meetings, we review public comment as we get them in. So we have gotten some comment in and we'll go over that at the next workshop.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on to old business, item C, Jordan Creek Greenway, Phase 1 River Road Shared Pathway. Randy?
Yep, so the engineer is working on those four design considerations we discussed. They've been engaged. They've been working on them for the past two weeks and I believe are getting close to being able to provide initial concepts to staff for review. Keep in mind, there is, you know, some permitting discovery to look at to see exactly what's going to be required and that will obviously be factored into their cost estimate for each one of these four design considerations. So we should be looking, hopefully within the next two to four weeks, to be able to bring those options back to the board for discussion.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Okay, moving on, we have direction and discussion. Are there any items that the board would like to bring forth this evening?
I have a quick question, please.
Of course.
And Kelly, actually, it's more for staff. A few meetings ago, we were discussing dumping on Jordan Road and we discussed the possibility of putting signage there. Is there follow-up for that? Is there a sign or?
Yes, the signs were ordered from Reliable Sign. We actually got a call two days ago that they are in, but with the paving today. So we're actually going to have someone pick them up tomorrow and then we will get the PA ones called in and then we will get that posted. We ordered two signs, one for each end of the street, so.
Perfect, okay, thank you. And also, Herb, I wanted to thank you, you and Public Works. You've been doing paving. Paving has been done in-house this year and you're doing a beautiful job. You're working really hard and, and result is, is just, thank you.
Thank you, and the crew appreciates that. I will.
Well, I have a comment to share on that same thread. I was at a meeting and a resident approached me, some of that I don't know, and they said to me, who is doing the paving over in the Belmont Street area? And I said, our Public Works staff, is, is everything okay? And they said, no, it's amazing. It's incredible. And they asked me to pass along their gratefulness to the staff. So if you would please let all of your crew know, the community's very happy for what you're doing for them, so thank you.
Thank you. They are a great group of guys. They work very hard at this, obviously when it's hot. We also have material over 200 degrees below us at the same time. Great group of guys, I wouldn't ask to work with anyone better than them, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? I just had one to bring up. At a prior meeting, we discussed potentially holding a workshop soon for reviewing our bylaws for some of our boards and commissions. And we had floated a date of July 13th. I didn't know if the board wanted to plan on that or if we wanted to do that at another time. I do know we need to begin the process of interviewing for our vacancies on our boards. Civil Service does need their alternate appointed sooner than later. And also the Park and Rec Board has been without a member for a little while now. And all of them need attention. I'm not trying to point those two out, but I was at those meetings and I heard the members of those boards express questions about that. So I just want to open the floor to the board for your discussion, if there's any.
Are you asking, are we going to interview that day? Is that what you want to do?
I'm putting it out for discussion.
I'm fine with that. If that's, if we have the applicants, I'm fine with it. It's a workshop night.
You're suggesting interviewing on July 13th?
I didn't do a.
If that's the pleasure of the board, we could certainly arrange that.
That's fine. My, my comment is on another topic we wanted to, well, we said we would add, but go ahead, finish that one first.
So is that something we want to move forward with? Is the workshop for reviewing our bylaws for our committees or do you want to use that opportunity to do interviews?
Can we do both?
Depending on how many applicants we, would be a lot, put into two hours.
I'd like to see us do both if we can. We've got to.
We can certainly make that our goal and depending on how many applicants we have. Okay, let's, is everyone in agreement?
Yeah, I was just thinking from a timing standpoint, the first time we discussed the draft bylaws was February. And we're now approaching four months later. July will be five months later. So yeah, I definitely think we should have it on the agenda.
Well, Randy, do you need anything else from us to?
Just which positions the board would be interested in interviewing for. Typically, the workshops are from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So I would throw out the suggestion, maybe leave an hour for the discussion for the bylaws for the boards and commissions and then maybe try to tackle two or three interviews. I'm not sure how long the, the previous one lasted for those, those candidates. But just looking at the list here, the Civil Service Commission, as you mentioned, is a very important one that I think the township should focus on, on getting filled as well as the Parks and Rec Board. I believe they've been without a vac, or they've been without one member now since December. So those would be two that I think you highlighted that, in my opinion, would, would be, you know, two that we should probably focus on moving forward.
And you know we have applicants for both?
Chief, I know, I do believe you do have one for civil service?
I mean, that's what we would need to, we need to know that.
There's two for civil service. I do know we have some for Parks and Rec Board as well.
So we do have them, okay.
Yeah.
So if Tracy would email the board the letters of interest that we have, we can work on with Randy spacing out the applicants on that evening, in that second hour.
Yes.
Is that agreeable?
Yes, that's fine.
I, I would just like to add that the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission has been with one member for quite some time as well. Greg's been nudging me.
Well, we can certainly look at the number of applicants and how many we can fit in that evening. And thank you for mentioning that. I didn't mean to prioritize those two. Any other comments from the board? Okay, moving forward, we're at our courtesy of the floor. If there's anyone in the public who would like to address the board? Or anyone online? Okay, I'm moving on to our next item.
I got.
We do.
Robert Hodges, 1707 Pens Crossing.
Hello.
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you.
So at the previous meeting, the Land Preservation Committee gave a report. So it looks like we're trying to move forward on land preservation. And earlier we discussed the Davis property that was donated. I know that there's a piece of property right next to the Davis property and I'm wondering if any, if there's been any discussion about buying that property since it is for sale. if any, if there's been any discussion about buying that property since it is for sale. Thank you.
Well, Randy, did you want to address that?
What I would say to that, Mr. Hodges, is that staff and the board is aware of that property, but I will defer my comment on that, that specific piece of property, since it is a discussion that does occur in executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else in the chat? Moving on, we have our next item, a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Do I hear a motion to proceed with said motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. We, I do have an executive session to announce, the board will meet this evening following this meeting, an executive session to discuss personnel matters. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion is adjourned. Thank you all.